I've got shorts on. This is like the first time I wore long pants in a while. It feels really weird. Yeah, we're shorts to work.
I never do.
Well, now I can. Before, it was against the rules of the company, but I wouldn't anyway. As one of the account managers, I was the dirtiest guy. I think I was dirtier than half my crew at the time.
Good evening, everyone. It's time to start the Union County Planning Board meeting of October 6th, 2020. Before we call it order, I would like to ask that we each of us treat each other civilly. Respect opinions. We can disagree to disagree, but we don't want to get into a shouting match or anything like that. Second thing is, is there anybody here that's speaking as a citizen for or against? Not a representative of the applicant. Is there anybody here? Okay, so there's none here, so it looks like there aren't anybody speaking with the applicant related. Okay? What I'd like to do is ask you to stand for a moment of reflection or remain standing for a place of allegiance led by Robert McNally after this. Robert?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like Robert, be seated. At this time, we would like a motion to bring Robert Owen as a voting member tonight. Charlie, you have a second?
A second by Jonathan. Okay, thank you very much, Charlie.
You may now vote. Okay? You also have in front of you, should receive in the mail also, the agenda. Is there any recommendations for additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, then we have a motion to approve.
What's the motion?
Motion to approve. Thank you very much, Patrick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passed. Okay. You also have received the September 1st, 2020 minutes of the meeting. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections that need to be made on that? If not, I've called for approval of the man who has presented. Robert, thank you. Do you have a second? Louis, thank you. Okay, so that's done. Next time. Pardon? Folks, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Excuse me, thank you. Keep me honest in that. Next item is item number six. We're going to discuss CZ 2020-006 Piper Meadows. Consider making the recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners to approve or deny this request. I'd like to do a call leak to the microphone. He's already up there to walk us through his plea.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is case number 2020-006. We're calling it Piper Meadows. It is a request to rezone a piece of property in Union County from RA 40, which is a residential agricultural district, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, to R6 conditional, which is a residential 6,000 square foot minimum lot size conditional district. The applicant has requested this rezoning in order to develop the single-family neighborhood that you see represented on the conceptual plan with a maximum of 80 single-family residential houses. It also consists of some common open space for use by the residents in the neighborhood. The access point has one point of access off of Newtown Road. There's also a proposed stub street to stub into a property that's adjacent to this, and that property is on the corner of Newtown and Potter. Setbacks that are proposed would be 25 feet in the front, 25 feet in the rear, and eight feet on the sides. The overall density is 2.44 units per acre. And again, as you know, since this is a conditional request, if it was approved, it would be bound by the conceptual plan and any conditions that were associated with that. There were, so as far as conditions go, again, the project must be consistent with the conceptual plan. Staff would ask that the applicant dedicate 30 feet of right-of-way from Newtown Road as measured from the center line to the NC DOT for maintenance purposes. That's a pretty standard request. DOT would likely make that request as well. Stormwater, as you can see, that's already been, that may be a little hard to see, but those are proposed stormwater facilities, equal to the cluster option. The development would require sidewalks inside the neighborhood. We were asked that the sidewalks be installed along the frontage of Newtown Road. And then, subject to DOT approval, we've had some preliminary conversations with them, and they may want a left-hand turn lane into the site. If that's something that DOT would want, then we would ask that be a condition as well. However, if DOT said it wasn't necessary, then we wouldn't need that condition because DOT would likely not allow them to do it if they didn't want it, so. As far as the site goes, these are some photographs that were taken. This is Newtown Road. This photograph on the top left is looking toward the intersection of Potter. So the property would be on your right, kind of right there where the sign's telling you that there's a stop sign ahead, and there's a church just a little bit up the street on the other side of the road. Property on the, or the photograph on the top right is looking, that's Newtown Road looking back toward Monroe Highway 75. So it's looking in the other direction. The property on the bottom right is looking directly across the street, so there's an older house on this directly across the street. And then, the property on the bottom, or the photograph on the bottom left is looking into the site from Newtown Road. You can see it's currently being used for agricultural purposes. As far as municipalities go, Wesley Chapel does have a satellite area to the north. That is the Winding Creek neighborhood. That was a neighborhood that was originally approved by Union County, and then some lots were annexed into the town and some weren't. But it is a satellite of Wesley Chapel. The main portion of Wesley Chapel is a little bit further up to the north and to the west. Property is currently undeveloped. As I stated before, it is being used for agricultural purposes. Good bit of the property in the area is also undeveloped. There are a couple subdivisions. Again, the aforementioned Winding Creek, and then there's a larger lot development that's just to the east of it along Newtown called Majestic Forest. And that's been there for a good number of years. There's no major environmental features on this property. I forget the name of this stream. I should remember it because there's a sewer line along this stream. But just to the north, there's a, there is a stream there that has a sewer line. That's the main sewer line that serves this area. But this property, since it sits off Newtown, that's kind of the ridge line. You're sort of falling away at this point, so it's sort of high ground. Not, not a lot of environmental features located on that piece of property. The properties in the area are served by a mix of well and septic systems in Union County water and sewer, so it's kind of a mixed bag. This project is proposed to be served by Union County water and sewer. There's water currently located at the intersection of Newtown and Potter Road. In order to, in order to serve the development, water will need to be extended to the property. Sewer is available via a short extension that will connect into the Winding Creek neighborhood. Those easements are in place. When that, when the Winding Creek neighborhood was developed, public works required them to provide a future easement for sewer extension. But any of those improvements would all be at the developer's expense. The zoning in the area is generally one-acre density, so you have RA 40. It's the vast majority of the zoning. You do have some RA 20, which is a little bit to the east as you're kind of heading toward Monroe. And then, this RUC, that is this yellow up here in the Winding Creek neighborhood. That was basically a zoning district they assigned to pieces of property that they annexed that used to be Union County. So it's residential Union County is what that stands for.
And what is the approximate density of the RUC equivalent in Union County zoning terms?
It's about 1.25 units per acre. This was, I'm sorry?
Is that roughly R20?
It's sort of in between R20 and RA 40. The Winding Creek neighborhood was, it was an old category that we had that was called smart growth. And it was, you didn't have to rezone, but in exchange for some amenities, you got a 25% density bonus. So, under the county, this was zoned RA 40. So the overall density in that neighborhood would be about 1 and 1/4 per acre because you could lower your lot sizes down to whatever you wanted to, but your overall density could only be 1.25 because you got a 25% bonus.
Thank you.
These comments are directly from the school system. This would be in the Parkwood Cluster. Western Union Elementary would be the elementary school that serves it. You can see that's currently at 60% of capacity. And these are August numbers. This is the latest we got from the school system. Parkwood Middle is 83%, and Parkwood High is projected to be at 76%. And again, this last comment was directly from the schools. They don't anticipate that the development will present an adverse impact on school enrollments. As far as transportation goes, there's not, there's only a couple of traffic counts that are located in the area. One on Potter Road, north of the Newtown intersection. That was a 2017 number. It's 3,600 vehicle trips a day. And there's another one, actually, I'm sorry, I should take, I take that back. No, this wasn't NC DOT. I was thinking that that was a Union County number. That is an NC DOT number. And then, there's another one just on Newtown, just west of the intersection of Potter Road. A 4,500 vehicle trips per day. And both of these roads are shown with a future cross-section, two-lane with a paved shoulder. So, lane width won't change. It'll still be two-lane, but these roads will eventually, at some point, have a wider shoulder, paved shoulder. But there's no, there's no funding to do either, any of that work right now. Don't know when that funding may come along.
That intersection, Lee, is that about the church?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the church would be on that southeast corner, right there where my mouse is kind of hovering.
Is there any plans to put a stoplight there?
No, sir. I think there's been some discussion around, maybe a roundabout in the future right there, but I don't believe that they're going, they would, I don't think they would consider putting a stoplight at that intersection.
It's a four-way stop now.
It is, yeah, and that's fairly recent. It used to just be a two-way stop. I believe, I believe Newtown was the through, and Potter had the, had the stop signs on it. And they recently, within the past few years, I think, made that a four-way stop. Land use plan, it does project this as mixed residential, which does anticipate some higher, some higher densities and some different kinds of densities. The rezoning does appear consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan since it is located within the mixed residential area. I do want to note that the coordinating committee, you know, we are in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, and the coordinating committee has made an official recommendation on that comprehensive plan, so I feel like I should give you some information about that as well. The property in that recommended plan, and again, I want you to understand that that plan is just at this point a recommendation. It's not been adopted. It's still has to go to the Board of County Commissioners. But it's information, since it's an official recommendation, I feel like you should, you should know. It does lie in the single-family area on that new plan. In many of the committee discussions, it was noted that the mixed residential was probably too big and that higher density should really be incorporated more around some of the major, major commercial nodes and not just spread out all over the county. But again, based on the current adopted comprehensive plan, that's what you're looking at now. It is consistent with that. There is one more bit that I, that was in the staff report that I think I skipped over. The property, again, it has been zoned RA 40 since Union County first adopted zoning. A rezoning request was submitted for that property recently. It was case 2019-007. That was submitted on May 6th, 2019. That request sought more houses, so I think that was a 95-home request. The planning board recommended to approve that rezoning. However, the Board of Commissioners denied that request on August the 19th of 2019. That required anybody to wait a year before they could make a new resubmital. If anybody have any questions, it may, I know the applicant's here. I think they do have a presentation, but before they do, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Where's, you said that Winding Creek is near there?
Winding Creek neighborhood, yes, sir. It is. That would be the neighborhood just to the north. Kind of where I'm hovering, yeah.
Didn't we have a rezoning across the street from that?
We did. We actually had two rezonings across the street. I believe we had one on one of these parcels in here that was a, an animal kennel. A gentleman wanted, he lived on the property and he wanted to operate a kennel. That one came through the board. It was, the planning board recommended approval, and the Board of Commissioners ultimately approved that one. And then, the one to the north of that was Crestwind. That's the 615-lot, age-restricted community. I think it was around 2.1 or 2.2 units per acre. Planning board recommended turn that one down. Board of Commissioners approved it. So yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Ali, what's the first, what's the closest commercial area, a zone commercial to this, to this development?
I think the easiest way to answer that question is for me to pull up our GIS. So we're right here. The closest Union County commercial area is going to be a good bit away. I'd be willing to bet that the closest area zoned for commercial is probably going to be, I know Wesley Chapel recently zoned a piece of property at the corner of Potter and 84 for, I think it was office use. That, again, that's not our jurisdiction, but I think that is probably the closest commercially zoned property. There's also some, this county at the corner of Airport and 84. Neither one of those have anything on them right now, but the one at Airport and 84 is B2. That was part of a planned unit development that was approved, I think, back in 2012 or 2013 that had a commercial aspect to it. And then, I think Wesley Chapel has that piece at the corner of 84 and Potter. Those are, if I had to make a guess, those would probably be the two closest.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How far down from the proposed entrance is that stop sign at Potter?
Well... Do, says an exact, about 800 feet. And the applicant may have some more information about that. I'm not sure if they looked at that distance in detail, but that's, that's probably pretty close.
You said before that there was, there's possibly a left-in?
Yeah, those are just preliminary conversations. DOT may not require that, and if they don't, that's fine. We'll take their recommendations and incorporate them into the approval.
Any other questions for Lee? Thank you, Lee. We reserve the right to call you back up, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Next we'll hear from the applicant. Any of you who want to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come to the mic. Clearly speak your name, your address, and speak into the mic where everybody can hear you, and we can record this for note purposes and go to the Board of Commissioners. With that, who would like to be the first to speak on behalf of the applicant? Ron Upser?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Mike McGee. Here in Union County all my life. The address is 4524 Carrick Road, Monroe, North Carolina. I guess I'm a little bit old and a little bit old-school, and I don't have a PowerPoint. I just like to put pictures and stuff up there so that you can see. We'll try to do better in the future. But Lee's pretty much covered everything there. We do have a, just a color kind of showing the subdivision there. There's 33 acres, and, you know, we're actually asking for the R6, but we're not looking for that high density. As he said, it's about two and a half houses per acre. Our goal, and what we've done here in other subdivisions here in the county, is to try to build just a good, solid, affordable, nice home, about 2,000, 2,500 square feet. Most of them are ranch-style, as you can see in the pictures there. Just to be honest with you, most of our customers are people who are, say, 40 to 60 years old. And that's why we don't anticipate a whole lot of children there. We have five, we'd like to have children there, but it seems like a lot of people like to buy our product that's moving down. They've got a big house and they want it to move down. That's another reason we're looking for smaller lots because nobody wants to have to have an $8,000 lawnmower and cutting grass and everything all week or half-day on Saturday. They'd rather be out playing golf or something. But our goal is to come in and build a very nice community, something that would be nothing. It's something that's affordable for people here in the county. It will be probably somewhere in the range of probably from 300,000 to 400,000. In that range is what will be, the pricing will be on these homes. As far as you're talking about some of the commercial stuff, now, you know, there's a huge shopping center up there where Target and Harris Teeter and all them are just, what, Lee? Four miles up the road or something there? Somewhere like that. So there's a lot of stuff that can help to, these people help to bring money into Union County there as far as taxpayers that they can, they can use there. Do y'all have any questions about anything there?
Is this going to be controlled by a homeowners association?
Yes, sir. We'll have a homeowners association.
You talked about the cutting the grass. Will that be provided or?
No, sir.
Homeowner responsible for their own?
Yes, sir. We try to do, we do that again because it, try to keep the homeowners association fees as low as possible. We let, if somebody wants to have a little push mower and push their grass or whatever, that's fine. But if, and if they want to hire it, that's okay, but we don't want to put that on every customer that's out there. Common areas would be by the HOA, yes, sir.
We're going to have a question there. When this goes to the Board of Commissioners, either way, I know that right now, you can't see anybody sitting on that side of the road by that, or that side of the room with all that sitting up there. Should that be included in the PowerPoint of the Commissioners?
We're, we're planning on doing that, yes, sir.
Just wanted to clarify that, okay. That was the biggest obstacle I had when I read this application. All I could see was that picture right there. I couldn't see anything else to get an idea. So I appreciate you bringing those to mind.
And we will, but we've already discussed that, and we will have a PowerPoint in place for the Commissioners.
Any questions?
But all these homes, everything that we build is all brick. There'll be no siding homes in there, just a nice brick community, something that the community would be proud of and the county would be proud of. Any other?
How many bedrooms are you looking for these homes to be?
These homes will have anywhere to three to, some of them will have four. Most of our homes have three bedrooms, and then we may have a bonus room or something up in, upstairs with an extra bedroom up there in some, but most of them's three bedrooms.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a combination of ranch and split, two-story or all just ranch?
It's 90% ranch homes. We, we've got one or two two-story plans, but the only time we use them is if it's on a lot that we just have to have a two-story on. Now, if somebody came in and said, hey, I wanted to buy a two-story house, yeah, we'd build that plan. We have it available. But in, in all of our other subdivisions, probably 90% of them are just single-story ranch.
Any other questions?
Out of curiosity, you, you built Crooked Creek?
Yes, sir.
Where is that again?
Crooked Creek is right on Sardis Church Road, just east of 74, about maybe a mile before you get to Sardis Church.
Okay.
Up there.
Just west of Sardis, huh?
Okay.
That's right. There's about 140-something houses in that subdivision. We just finished it.
Any other questions? Louis, you have any?
No, I'm good.
Charlie? Patrick?
We certainly appreciate your time.
Anybody else with your organization want to talk?
Ryan, Mitch, anybody? John, you got something you want to? John's my engineer. I'm sorry. He's with Eagle Engineering.
We know John.
Come on ahead, John.
Yes, sir. For the record, John Ross, Eagle Engineering, 2013A Van Buren Avenue in Indian Trail. Just want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for, for hearing this tonight. If there are any specific or technical questions that I can respond to, I'd certainly be glad to.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comment about this? Any motions or anything like that?
I'll have a comment, sir. This appears to be a first-class development, solid brick and that sort of thing. And I think it's to be an asset to our community, to our county. However, I will tell you that I would much prefer to be seeing some industrial or some commercial stuff being put up here to help balance our, our tax base. You gentlemen who build things and make things, a factory that hires people that pays taxes is a lot better than a guy who lives here paying the taxes for the county. My two cents, but your development is, is quite attractive, quite attractive. And that's, that's my two cents.
Lee, do you have any closing comments on this?
No, sir.
Anybody else got any other comments, further input or clarification or? Anybody else got any other comments, further input or clarification or? Mike, Steph, anyone?
I'll comment real quick. I agree with Louie that the, the houses are top-notch, like the design's great, the brick's great. As many of you in the county have had within the past month, I received my tax bill. The tax bill, fifty-six point two percent of that goes to the schools. So I'm looking at the amount of children that may go to the schools, and I, I see that the schools are still underserved, yet there's still a cost per student, and it runs approximately eight thousand per student. Now, it's not all the county's responsibility, but it does certainly add to that. In fact, there's no age restriction or anything, and there's three to four bedrooms. Concerns me that there's, regardless of how it's marketed, there's a very high likelihood you're going to have schoolchildren. And to that end, and to Louie's comment, unlike commercial development, it, it does take from the tax base more than give, and I certainly see the potential for that. Combined with the surrounding areas being R forty, R eight twenty, this is our, RA forty, which is agricultural zoning, which admittedly is probably not right for this area anymore anyways. But the closest development of any density is just shy of half of, of what they're asking. So again, while I feel it's a beautiful, well-designed neighborhood, I feel the density's too high. And I think this is going to have an adverse effect on not only the traffic, the infrastructure, but the tax base moving into the future, and it's going to set a precedent for adjacent communities to, to want to come in and look for similar zoning. That's my two cents.
Current comp plan calls for Lee to house.
Uh, current comp? Current comp plan is, is this mixed residential. And that comp plan doesn't necessarily specify a, a number of units, but the, the way that, that that comp plan sort of works is the closer you get to an activity node, the high, which, which are commercial nodes, the, the higher that density should be, and then the closer you get to either agricultural areas or single-family areas, the, it, it, it should go down. But the same thing works for the single-family area as, as well. As, as that single-family area is closer to ag, it should drop to less than one unit per acre. The closer it gets to the mixed residential, it should be around two units per acre. And then you pick up at the mixed residential at around two, and then you go higher as you move toward, toward those commercial nodes. So, so, so when you get to a commercial node, you, depending on the type of, of commercial activity that, that's occurring, you could be in the density range of potentially looking at townhomes or, or apartments. Now, we don't get many of those out in the unincorporated area. We have on occasion, but that's generally how this comprehensive, comprehensive plan was written. So it doesn't, it doesn't give you a, a specific number for, you know, each individual properties, but it should be looked at more as kind of a, a sliding scale and where it fits within that, within that area.
Lee, I'll call him. Top left of that land use fund that you have up, yeah. What's there?
This, kind of on this property?
Yeah, but is, is that Park Place up there?
That is, no, that is, actually, let me zoom out, get my GIS pullback up here. I actually closed it, sorry about that.
That's going to be the age restricted area?
I believe, I believe that's right, but I didn't want to say that without actually pulling the map up first. Yeah, so again, that's the piece of property, that, that parcel that you were pointing to is this piece. This, so this piece and the piece just to the north of it, that is part of the Crestwind development. That's the one that was approved by the board of commissioners, I think, back in October or November of twenty nineteen. It's about two point one, maybe two point two units per acre. It was an age-restricted development. If you remember, that was the one, six hundred and fifteen units, had a fairly large amenity area, private roads. It was a really large-scale development, but I think the overall density there was around two point one, two point two. Park Place hasn't come to the planning board yet. That's the large twenty-one hundred unit development, I think, and it is east of this. So it is in this area, kind of right in here. So it's, it's sort of on the other side.
So that. So that number of ten sixty-one units, that's?
Are you talking about on the Park Place?
No, no, no. Western Union County attendance is approximately ten sixty-one. Is that the school kids or is that units?
You're under the school section?
Yeah. The zoning, the, the green and yellow map?
Yep. Yes, so those are. That ten sixty-one number, that was provided by the school system. That is a, a number that they calculate based on the information they receive from the county and, and from the towns in those school clusters. So what they're saying there is that there's about one thousand sixty-one units that are yet unbuilt in that west, in that, uh, Parkwood cluster. So they go on to list what some of those units are. So you see Stonebridge, Walnut Crest. Now, not, not all of these units are, are going to be built. I mean, they, they may all be built, but not all of them are built yet.
But they're all in the same?
For example, Park Place is on.
They're all in this area.
Right, they're all, they all go into that Parkwood district. But, but you'll note that they say Park Place on there, and that's not even come to the, the, the planning board yet. But we, when we send information over to the school system to request their feedback, they go ahead and start plugging those numbers in.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Lee? At this point, we've come to close with both the comments. Is there any more input or anything that we need? From anybody? Before the board discussions continue or anything? Is there anything else? Hearing that, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to either approve or deny. Is there anything out there? Motion for?
Motion to deny, density's just a little too high.
Why?
Again, as I stated earlier, the closest zoning comparable to this is, I forget the name, is it West? Can't remember, the one closer to Wesley Chapel, one point two five units per acre.
Oh, Winding Creek.
Winding Creek, I'm sorry. Two point four four, you are roughly twice the density of the most dense adjacent property. And again, you combine that with the impact on the school system that you're not going to see. And I'm not a fan of Crestwind, but there's going to be minimal, if any, impact to the school system or the taxes associated with that development. So I just don't feel like this is the, the proper zoning for this parcel.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any more board discussion before we go with the vote?
I, I just wanted to make a comment. Pardon? I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
That I could have, I, I kind of remember Crestwind being.
I'll pull that mic a little bit closer to you.
I'm sorry. I said, I kind of remember Crestwind being like, like a two point six or something like that. It was pretty high, just because it's, you know, sort of the same thing. It's, it's, it's a high-density development.
I can access. I bet I can't, but I want to try. Nope. That's not going to let me. I was going to try to access my, my drive downstairs.
That's, that's all right. Does anybody else recall that? I've been wrong before, so it's going to happen again.
If you can give me just a few minutes, I can tell you. I, I can, I can access our review software from, from my phone. I could access it for that, but I don't know the web address.
Well, I don't, maybe you don't have to go that far, but, you know, there's that, that development that's coming in nearby. And if you look at your GIS map to the, to the northeast, that looks like a pretty tight development up there. I don't know what that is. It's got like a real roundabout in it. So it, it seems like what we're seeing as far as development goes is the higher-density developments are trying to move their way in, one way or the other. I'm surprised we don't have anybody from Wesley Chapel here to speak on this. It is what it is, right?
May I? May I? I, uh, my heart lies with, with Jonathan's sentiments. We do have a density problem, we have a lot of problems. And, but certainly, there are two, there are two overwhelming things that, that you've got to remember is that people are going to make a living, you own some land, you got to do something with it. Either you put crops on it, or you build something on it, or you grow trees on it, whatever. But you got to, you got to have some building to do something with it. And I would say the, the, the quality of the construction, all brick houses, they have much higher end and that sort of thing, barely, but it does, in my estimation, override the drawbacks. And, you know, in, in the interest of being a, a free-market capitalist, I would be inclined to vote yes, but only marginally. But I say to you, you know, is, is every time we develop something else like this, and there's nothing else being moved out here. I watched the city of Charlotte move its suburbs, so I, I moved to Charlotte in nineteen seventy. I moved to, 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 to Stollings in two thousand, and I moved into Monroe about a year and a half ago. And because they keep running me out, and that, that town keep growing and growing and growing. Somewhere along the line, you developing people need to know this. You got to, you got to make a barricade and stop the growth. Say, y'all grow north, so south, east, grow, grow west, but don't go east. We, we done here. And, and what I believe that would be, would be putting in some commercial stuff in here, some industrial perhaps, because something makes jobs, and make a physical barricade where the people who live close by are going to work in this area and not go to Charlotte. And that's what's going to make Union County, for you guys who are born, like I have a gravesite here, for you guys who are born here, you know, you do not want your grandson to be living in Charlotte. You know that. But what are you going to do to stop it? And it's going to be, and developers should know these things. There's got to be a way of making Union County have its own identity by planning the way things are built and, 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 and the way, the way, the, the infrastructure goes. So I, in this case, I will, I will vote to approve, sir, but believe me, you got barely, barely. And I'd ask you, please listen to what I was saying here, because I'm going to be, I'm not dead of old age yet, and every time we, if something else comes up, I'm going to be harder and harder to work with. So, please. That's my comments.
Thanks, Louie. We have a motion on the table to deny, and we have a second. Motion was made by Jonathan, sir, by Patrick. All those in favor of denying it, raise your right hand. Those in favor of approving, raise your right hand. Motion to approve, curious. All right. At this point, Lee, would you want to make any comments of where the applicant goes forward? Which board meeting, et cetera?
Yes, so the next step in this process is a public hearing before the Union County Board of Commissioners. That will likely be in November. And those dates are going to be, should be November the second would be the public hearing. And then the decision, if everything holds true to schedule, November the sixteenth.
Thank you very much. At this time, this ends this portion of the item number six. I would like the applicant, kindness shown, his board, his ability, et cetera. And just wish you safety, good health as you go, and good luck at the board commissioner meeting, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Can I, can I just address one thing, Mr. Chairman?
It's over.
Okay, I was just going to make a comment. The reason that we like this, well, I don't, is so that we can keep costs down, so that the young people or older people, whoever can afford. Thanks for, appreciate it.
You're quite welcome.
Lee? About the staff report?
Yes, sir, brief. I don't have anything major to report as far as, as any of the rezonings go. I believe the two most recent ones were the Epcun Community on Billy Howie Road across from Wesley Oaks near the Target Shopping Center, and then the Beulah Church Road and Waxaw Indian Trail, that corner that was requested to be rezoned, be to. Those public hearings were last night, so those decisions won't be made until two Mondays from now. So I'll report back those decisions at your November meeting. I do really quickly, again, we are winding down on the comp plan somewhat. Our coordinating committee has made an official recommendation as far as the comprehensive plan goes. I, I promise I'll be brief. I know some of these time, on these I get long-winded, but this one's pretty straightforward. All the subcommittees and the coordinating committee were all asked a series of questions regarding, you know, the new plan versus the current comprehensive plan, and then a mix of, of, of regulations and, and new programs. And you can see here how each individual committee voted, and then how ultimately the coordinating committee voted. The new plan was supported a hundred percent by the coordinating committee, and almost a hundred percent across the board. There were a couple of dissenting votes on the ag committee for the, the, the new land use plan versus the, the one we currently use. But the coordinating committee has, has fully endorsed the new land use plan. As far as updating regulations and just stopping there, or some new regulations plus some new programs, that's the difference between the advancement and the management scenario. The advancement is the one with regulations and new programs. That was supported by the coordinating committee at seventy-eight percent. So there were a few dissenting votes. And just so you know how these broke down, you can see it's kind of in the strongly supported and supported range, and then neutral and not supported are this yellow and red. The coordinating committee, in, in their recommendation, decided that in order to be included in the plan and to be supported, it had to have at least two-thirds. They didn't want to just do a simple majority. They felt like that any new programs or regulations that were recommended needed to have a strong, needed to have strong support behind them. So that's, that's why they went with two-thirds. But the advancement scenario, you can see that's the one that the coordinating committee selected. They selected that with seventy-eight percent. Eighty-nine percent. 89% supported the increased stormwater requirements, so that made it into the plan, the recommended plan. Well-testing on new homes, which is really just a flip-flop of when the certificate of occupancy is issued and when the well test results come back. It's a pretty straightforward process of how that would be implemented. That was supported at 89%. Cluster allowances where water and sewer are present, basically meaning you don't get any extra density, you can just shrink your lot sizes down. So if you're RA 40, you still get one unit per acre, you can just have some smaller lot sizes to, since you are on water and sewer. That was supported at 78%. Open space requirements and developments in rural areas, this is basically getting at the question of preserving rural character and basically lowering densities. So maybe not even approaching RA 40. This was approved at 89%. School siting requirements, everyone across the board supported that. Coordinating committees supported that at 100%. Transition areas for donut holes broadly supported by most of the subcommittees, and then by the coordinating committee at 89%. Well-testing on existing homes. This was the idea that was brought forward by one of the committees, that we've got this problem with wells in the county, and should there be a way to test existing homes that are being sold? So this would be a new test based on the transaction of a house, based on the sale of a house. And that would require some special legislation in Raleigh. And I think a lot of committee members, and this was even said during the coordinating committee meeting, that it was a, they didn't, the idea sounds good, however, some felt that it was an extra government intrusion on private property rights and the sale of a house, and some just felt that it would be hard, that there probably wouldn't be a lot of support for it, even though there might be local support. It would be hard to get that support in Raleigh. So that was only 33%, so that failed to make it in the plan. The well rehabilitation grant program, that was the idea that the county would provide a grant to people who had bad wells that could then use that to help offset the cost of putting a filtration system on that well. A lot of the same issues there. A lot of the committee members felt that it was a government intrusion on private property. A lot of people almost honestly looked at it like, you know, why should, it's your well. You should take care of the well on your property, and it shouldn't be someone else's responsibility to do that. So that one also failed. Establishing a rural water authority, that was the idea to, that was an idea that was floated actually by one of the coordinating committee members. And that was the idea that a rural water authority could potentially go out and get grants to help extend water in the rural parts of the county, and that passed. That made it into the recommended plan. So the quarter cent sales tax, it passed on one and it failed on one. So the idea of a quarter cent sales tax was successful. However, for funding for recreation projects, this is one of those that the coordinating committee, it had a simple majority. 56% of the coordinating committee members liked it, but it did not make it into the recommended plan because they wanted, they set their threshold at two-thirds. So you had to have a two-thirds support to make it into plan. So use of quarter cent sales tax funds for recreation projects did not make it into the recommended plan. Funding for transportation projects, however, meaning roads, roundabouts, things like that, that did make it into the plan. Establishing a litter task force, 100% of the coordinating committee voted to include that. Funding broadband internet expansion programs, that was supported 100% across the board at the subcommittee levels, and it was supported 89% at the coordinating committee. And finally, the last one, supporting proactive water and sewer extensions to assist municipal planning efforts. This is the idea that Union County would partner with municipalities to upgrade infrastructure in certain areas to help the towns implement their plans. This failed. This was, only got 22% support. So the recommended plan will be all the things that were supported. The recommended plan will not include any of the things that were not supported. We've been working with our local consultant here in Monroe. We have a graphics person, they're actually located on Main Street, Jason Wally. He's actually on one of our, one of the committees, but he owns a studio here on Main Street. He is helping us with a lot of our graphics and making our document look pretty. We can write good content, but unfortunately, none of the planning staff has a design background, so we're not very good at making documents look very pretty. So he is helping us with that, and that will, that final document will be produced and sent out to the various subcommittees for their upcoming meetings, and we hope to get a final thumbs up on the final recommended document. Then that will come to the Planning Board at some point, probably end of this year, beginning of next year, and ultimately, it will go on to the Board of County Commissioners for final, final action. So what you see here is the recommended plan. That's not a, again, that may not be a final document. This body may look at it and say, well, we like these ideas, we don't like these ideas, so we're going to recommend something a little bit different. The Board of Commissioners may get it, and they may say, we appreciate that, coordinating committee, good job, Planning Board, good job, but we're going to do a different bundle. And ultimately, what they approve will be the final approved Union County 2050 comprehensive plan. If anybody has any questions so far, I will be happy to answer them. And, and once we get closer to this coming to the Planning Board, we'll probably set up maybe some, I mean, I would love to sit down with you and kind of go through some of these things in detail, because I know it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff being thrown at you at once. And I know we've got a few folks who are on the, some of the subcommittees. So you are more clued in on what's been going on than a lot of the other members, but I would like to set up some two-on-ones just to come in, and so we can talk through, answer any questions you have. So you're prepared when it does come to the Planning Board.
So what you're saying is you're not an artist?
I am not an artist, no. I would like to be an artist, but I'm not an artist.
Any other questions for Lee?
The coordinating committee, 89% on the board, man. What was there, what wasn't 100%?
Honestly, when I was going over this, I was trying to recall. I honestly don't remember. I think it just had to do with the idea that government shouldn't be telling private businesses where to expand their territory. Because these broadband services are all provided by, they're all private providers, whether it's Spectrum or Windstream or whoever. So it was really the idea that government shouldn't be telling those private businesses where to put their infrastructure.
I'm just thinking for the farmers.
Sure, and...
Equipment that they have, or also computerized now.
And that's actually where, that's actually where the issue originated. It originated, Charlie's on the ag committees, he can probably tell you about it.
And all the children, the kind of mission, just started that call, and then go to get, and then all the kids, and they're online. So everybody, pretty much got on board.
Yeah, so it did. It started at the ag committee with...
You want a thing now?
It is. It's a huge thing. It's blown up. I mean, the ag committee...
Kids have to use computers.
Yeah.
If they don't have it, Alvin Western or whatever, it's out there.
And I don't think, I don't think, and I, the ag committee meeting where it came up, that was, the ag committee, I've been attending those religiously, and they are very, very good meetings. If you ever want good discussion about any topic in Union County, come to those ag committee meetings, because they're really good. But that is, that's where it originated, and it did. It originated around connections for the agricultural industry to help them out. And then, when it sort of got to the, into the plan and other committees saw it, then, you know, the school issues came up, so it really kind of took off. And in fact, it's sort of taken on a whole role in and of itself, sort of outside of this plan. There's been a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners already about broadband, so I think this has sort of elevated past, I think this will definitely make it into the plan, but I think it's sort of elevated itself, sort of, it sort of outpaced the plan, if you want to, if you want to say that. But it is, it's a very important issue.
It's a challenge, saying to run a, to have business kind of base in a rural area where the broadband kicks out four or five times a day, and you're trying to, all your companies want to communicate that way, they don't want to do it any other way. And that's what happens to our local, the kind of model there.
Any other questions for Lee? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job as usual, you and staff. Is there any closing comments from anyone on this board? Robert?
Just a question, I suppose the next month is going to be a week after, it's going to be on the first?
That is probably correct, because that is a holiday.
It's election day.
It is election day. You know, normally, we, I'm actually glad you brought that up, because usually, these things come up when we're about to prepare the agenda, and we see something, and we say, oh, gosh, we wish we had have talked about that beforehand. Since election day is not necessarily a holiday, we have had planning board meetings on election day before. This is a pretty big election, so if you want to do a different day, I think that would be fine. What I would suggest is that maybe you think about a couple days that would work, and we call, we don't change the regular meeting schedule, because that's kind of already been set, but the chairman can call a special meeting of the Planning Board. So if we can think about a time in November that would work for who's here tonight, or we could send out a poll tomorrow to all the board members to see what might work, and then I can get back with Don and pick the date that works the best. We just have to post it, a minimum of 48 hours in advance, because we would do it way before then.
Make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Do a due-in poll?
Yep, we'll do that.
And then have everybody can respond.
Yep.
We take the most popular date, and that'd be it.
All right, those are, yeah, it was pretty straightforward. All right. Do that.
Louie, anything?
No, sir. Thank you much.
Charlie? Jonathan?
Please don't recommend a date where we might have rioting in the streets. I'd like to get my vehicle back in one piece.
Hey, you know, the last 2021, and, yeah. All right. At this point, we come to the end of the meeting. Appreciate everybody being here, and we have a motion to adjourn. Charlotte, you have a say? Thank you, Patrick. All of your favorites, you write in. Be safe, everybody, as we can be.